So we're gonna... Let's see, I think first we're going to close session, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Oh.
Not there.
He's probably back there already. City Clerk, we're resuming the meeting of December fifteenth, and we're going to recess to close session first, correct?
No, sir. Actually...
So you need your six forty-five special meeting agenda, has one item to amend a resolution, and then we'll go right into the continued December fifteenth meeting.
Was that a closed session? Okay, so we do that one. And then we come back for the seven o'clock meeting.
Seven o'clock, right, so we're in open session for both.
Okay, alright, so... So we'll open the six forty-five special meeting, and... We're doing this via Zoom pursuant to the Governor's order, and we'll do a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence for the troops. You join me for a pledge. Where you stand, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hoffler. Mayor Hoffler.
Here. Here.
Mayor Protem Loa. Mayor Protem Loa.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt. Councilmember Bettencourt.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Carrillo. Councilmember Carrillo.
Here.
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop. And Councilmember Bishop.
Here. Here.
Waiver full reading of resolution? Waiver full reading of resolution?
So I'm a...
So I'm a...
Have a motion? Have a motion? Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
So ordered.
So ordered.
Consent calendar. Adopt an amended resolution by the City of Palmdale, Consent calendar. Adopt an amended resolution by the City of Palmdale, authorizing examination of sales use and transaction records. authorizing examination of sales use and transaction records. Any public comments received? Any public comments received?
No, sir, not at this time. No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Okay. Staff recommendations, adopt the amended resolution, CC twenty twenty dash one one five. Staff recommendations, adopt the amended resolution, CC twenty twenty dash one one five. Anybody have any questions or a motion? Anybody have any questions or a motion?
I do have a question. I noticed on the staff report that there is an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars for the consultant.
I do have a question. I noticed on the staff report that there is an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars for the consultant.
What was that, the increase of the twenty-five thousand dollars?
What was that, the increase of the twenty-five thousand dollars?
The increase in the amount of the contract is to administer and review for Measure AV's portion.
The increase in the amount of the contract is to administer and review for Measure AV's portion.
Their current contract with us is only for current sales tax.
Their current contract with us is only for current sales tax.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no other questions.
I have no other questions.
Anything else or a motion? Anything else or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Carrillo. I have a motion by Mr. Carrillo.
Aye. Aye.
And a second by Ms. Bettencourt. And a second by Ms. Bettencourt. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffler. Mayor Hoffler.
Aye. Aye.
Mayor Protem Loa. Mayor Protem Loa.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt. Councilmember Bettencourt.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo. Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes. Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop. And Councilmember Bishop.
Yes. Yes. Very good. This meeting will stand adjourned and will return at seven o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. Very good. This meeting will stand adjourned and will return at seven o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. And I believe will be at item number twenty-four, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So... Has anybody had any other ideas? The only one that I had gotten any feedback on was from Mr. Carrillo. He wanted to be, wanted to be considered as an alternate for the General Assembly at SCAG. And that's, that's great because he's been participating over there at SCAG, so that would be consistent. Anybody else have any other changes or anything they want to get out of?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was actually thinking of the delegate position since I've been in the Policy Committee for the Housing Committee. I think that it's a good idea for everybody to have a chance to participate in all the different committees.
Okay, well, you need to bring that up because that comes up in, I think, June. I, you, guys, that's why I specifically asked you about that.
Well, that's why I asked for the, um... The bylaws from SCAG.
Right.
That's what I wanted to propose. If it's due at this time, I'd like to see if the council would consider me having as the actual delegate and not just an alternate. Because I think that we all need to have the experience.
Right, so... So you want to take over all those committees at SCAG then?
No, not all of them. The alternate, just the delegate position.
Okay, well, again, that comes up in June. That isn't, that isn't on this for tonight. That is, that comes up at SCAG. Then they have a two-year deal on that.
Well, according to SCAG bylaws, the appointment is done at the council label, and this is the time to do the appointments.
Well...
It's, yeah, it's on our list right here.
What's that?
It's, yeah, it's on the list of appointments.
Yeah, it's on the list of the maniac.
Maybe the attorney could clarify that.
And I think it's clarified because that's the reason I asked for the bylaws directly from SCAG.
Right.
And the answer I got from Maggie is that it's an appointment position at the council. What's that?
The discussion was about the General Assembly.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, to be appointed to the General Assembly.
Well, exactly, but it's not the General Assembly. You're talking about the Regional Council.
If I could join, jump in, this is Mike Behan. Um, yes, the correct acronym is the RC member, the Regional Council Member, which typically goes to the General Assembly every year. There is no alternate for that position, but Councilman Carrillo is correct that the council does decide on the delegate for the RC member.
Well, that's, that's the, the district makes that decision, doesn't it?
No, the Palmdale City Council makes that decision because we were, back in twenty eighteen, when the NCTC was formed, typically the subregions do elections, but we had been doing a rotation, so they let us keep our current methodology. And we had the current position, so... And that was based on an election by our council, a nomination by our council for your current position, which also has to be ratified by the NCTC later. But it is correct that the Palmdale City Council makes that decision, as it stands right now.
All right, well, it's always my understanding that it was District Forty-three that had, had to ratify that, but, you know... I think that, uh... Well, if, if... I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. So what you're saying, Mr. Behan, is that that's subject to a vote by the city council and has to be voted on tonight? Is that correct?
It doesn't have to be voted on tonight, but yes, the council does make that vote.
Okay, I'll vote to nominate, I mean, I'll move to appoint Mayor Hoffler to this position.
All.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Actually, it's not open, but the, the question would actually be... Because it, because the rotate comes up in May, so, City Attorney, is it, is it even necessary unless somebody wants to make a motion to remove me?
I can't speak as to the other entity, but as far as ours, if this is what we, well, it is when we hold our appointments for committee, subcommittees, and other organizations, that I would concur with Mr. Behan, it would happen at this meeting, and then the seating may take place subject to the bylaws of the subsequent organization. So, this seems like a matter's been brought before City Council today.
Okay, we've not done it that way before, but, okay, whatever you guys want.
So are we voting on someone to replace you when the rotation comes up, or are we, I'm a little confused, so...
Yeah, me too.
Well, that's, well, here, I can clarify that. So, again, I, you know, not, I can speak as to our organization that we have in our, or before us tonight, that we are going to vote on these positions, right? If that is subject to the bylaws of another organization, specifically on the date that a new officer takes office, then it would be subject to that action. So although we may take the action tonight, it may not take place until May, if that's when the new delegate would be seated according to the subsequent committee's bylaws.
So if we select one and he, he takes that spot at the rotation, correct?
That's what it would appear to be, you know, off the cuff, without looking at their bylaws, that's what it would appear to be, but it could be if their bylaws say, because we're the enacting organization that prescribes the delegate, that if we have the authority to do it with absolute authority at any time, then it would take effect immediately, but...
And, and because it's a rotation, does that mean that Mayor Hoffler is not able to fulfill that condition for a second round?
No, the, that, is that, it comes up every two years, and it's subject to the ratification of the District Forty-three members.
So this is, this is Mike Behan, let me jump in there. When we're talking about rotation, the rotation was supposed to be between Palmdale and Lancaster. But Lancaster had decided that they were not interested in the RC position, so they deferred to Mayor Hoffler. Uh, but that, that, that's really what the rotation is.
Well, I don't...
And it comes up, and that comes up for ratification now through the NCTC every two years. The term ends in, I think, May or June.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Did that, you know, that, you gotta, you gotta consider that, um, uh... I, I'm on a lot of committees and subcommittees over there, and that, um, that's gonna, um, that's gonna vacate our influence at, at those levels, but that's your, that's your guys' call, you know, that, that takes an extraordinary amount of time, and, uh...
I'm familiar with that, I've been doing it.
And Transportation, and Transportation Vice Chair will likely lose that, so...
I don't want to dismiss one's interest in this, though. I mean, he wants to be a part of this board, and even after that clarification, are you still interested in being a part of this one?
I am, and there is a motion on the floor. Was there a second, and if there is, then I'll make a substitute motion.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll make that substitute motion to nominate you for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
So there's no second on my motion, just to clarify the record, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'll make the second to the substitution motion.
All right, well, I guess we'll call for a question. City Clerk?
Mayor Hoffler.
No.
Mayor Protem Loa.
No.
Councilmember Bettencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
The substitute motion passes.
Uh, okay, we're good, we're good. All right, I can sure use the time off. Thank you, I think, so...
I'm not getting a lot of...
I sure, I sure, I sure hope, sure hope you got a lot of time on the books. Uh, the next item is, um, discussion of possible action regarding the Mayor Protem appointment. Is there anybody... Are there gonna be any changes on the, on the rest of these committees? Or are they gonna stay the same? That was the only one that we had been notified there was a, did anybody else want to change anything?
Well, as you know, we, uh, we do rotate our Mayor Protem position every year. We've done it for many years now.
Before we go to the Mayor Protem, we have all these other committees. Is everything else gonna remain the same? The same positions that we've had?
We don't have any other motions on, on the floor to change, um, council committees.
I believe that all the remaining committees that are in place as of now remain in the same positions. I just say the participants remain in the same positions they already have.
I'll make a substitute motion to see if Mr. Bishop is interested in the NCTC. Would you like to be in that committee, Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I think I'd like to join that committee or be a part of that committee again.
Can I clarify something real quick? This is Mike. Um, so right now, Mayor Protem Loa is on the Transportation Committee. Um, Councilman Carrillo is on CEHD. So by the bylaws, the RC member automatically gets a seat at one of the policy committees. Mayor, as you know this, so there would be an opening for one seat, based on this recent change.
Well, he's on the, he's on Transportation, he's on Housing, so, uh, I, I would assume that he would probably stay there.
I'd like to stay there unless anybody else is interested.
Oh, no, not a chance. Marina, it's all yours, pal. I did that for six years.
Yep, it's a lot of fun. I've been very active in doing the numbers.
Yeah.
So I think there was a motion to keep the other positions?
So what I'm saying is there's one, there's still one seat open, if I'm, if my math is correct.
Okay.
Because the, the RC member automatically gets a seat. So let's say Councilman Carrillo takes the CEHD seat. There's still one seat that's unoccupied because Mayor Protem Loa is in the Transportation Committee, so there's a seat that's unoccupied. Now, typically Lancaster and Palmdale would, would vie for that spot, but Lancaster has not been interested.
Well, that, that's why, that's why, over the past two years, we've worked hard to structure people into these positions to leverage our, um, our impact at these boards. So that's why I've been on Transportation, I've been on the, uh, I, I just got elected Transportation Vice Chair. I just got elected to Metro North Sector Chair. So, uh, you know, we may have to bring this back next month because, uh, all that may end up getting, uh, have to get readjusted now. So I'll have to sit down with these different agencies and with Mr. Behan and the City Attorney to figure out where this is all gonna land next year. That's why I asked this two months ago, if somebody wanted to change, so we could look at the various bylaws and things of that nature. But, uh, you know, it takes a long time to get yourself in position. Well, Mayor, Mayor, just to sort of cut to the chase here, I had made a motion to have every, all the different positions, all the rest of these committees, not including the issue of the Mayor Protem, that they stay the way they are, and then I believe that Mr. Carrillo made a motion instead, or I guess it's a substitute motion, uh, to change the NCTC assignment to have, um, Mr. Bishop be, what would the position be? Mr. Carrillo, what, what are you nominating him for? As a delegate?
As a council member on the...
Because you have, we have a deleg- delegate who's Mayor Hoffler, alternate is Councilmember Carrillo. The business representative of the board, Avery.
I think we're, we're mixing up, we're mixing things up. That's the NCTC. We're talking about the SCAG.
I thought that's what we were talking about. Isn't that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're getting mixed up. Now we're, we're talking about NCTC.
Right.
Uh, which is... Let's focus on, let's focus on the policy committees that are tied to this district.
Are you talking about the SCAG?
Correct.
Okay, so SCAG?
There is an overlap, but they're very different. So as it stands right now, based on the motion, there's one seat that is open. And, uh...
Well, we, we can always come back and fill that seat if it's gonna be the Housing and Community Development.
Yes, we can, that's true.
Okay.
Okay, so, I, I thought we had already, um, made a, we had already made a decision on the SCAG to put, um, Mr. Carrillo there instead of Mr. Hoff, uh, the mayor, right? I thought we had already made that decision. Am I not right? That's correct.
We did, and we're talking about NCTC.
And then we went to NCTC.
Right.
And, and Behan brought up SCAG again, you're at NCTC, right?
So I had made a motion.
There's a lot of overlap on these different boards and commissions, and now we're gonna have to sit here and figure out where all this is gonna land, being that it's getting uh, swapped, swapped out here. But we'll, we'll come back to that, we'll have to, like I say, we're gonna have to go back to the other boards and commissions, because you know, again, we, we, we may be losing more than one seat, or changing more than one seat here, but that.
Yes, and, and again, the, the change that just happened does not affect the seats on the NCTC, those stay the same. That's Hoffbar, Loa and Bart Avery.
Okay, Mr. Behan, I think what Mr. Carrillo is, is uh, acting on here is to uh, is to have uh, Mr. Bishop appointed to NCTC. It looks like instead of uh, the delegate who's Mayor Hoffbar.
As a delegate.
As a delegate, so the one.
It's a separate option, I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify the difference between the two.
No, we, I think we all knew that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is that, that would be the only position that's open on the NCTC then, not the uh?
No, there's no, there's no position open, there's two positions on there, there's three positions, it's myself, it's uh, Mr. Loa and um, Mr. Avery.
Okay, cause last time.
Well, if, 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 if you guys don't think, you know, I've been doing a good job over there, carrying the water for the city, that, I mean, that's your call.
Well, I'm just asking if someone else is interested, and I'm like to nominate Mr. Bishop for the, the delegate position at NCTC as an alternate motion.
And I'd like to remain as representative at large for whatever that's worth, but uh, so your motion is to replace the delegate? Or to represent, or to change the representative at large?
A delegate.
Delegate? Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
So the motion is, Madam uh, City Clerk, by Mr. Carrillo is to appoint uh, Councilmember Bishop as a delegate at NCTC. That's the, that's the motion, okay.
In, 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 in place of uh, myself, correct?
Yep, apparently so.
Apparently so, okay, call for the motion. City Clerk?
Mayor Hoffbar?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
No.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, then, as to the balance of these uh, boards and commissions. Are we gonna have those remain the same, or are we gonna make some more changes?
I don't know, why don't you, why don't you ask the other guys there?
I am, I'm asking out loud.
They seem to have that, some changes in mind here.
We usually rotate these positions yearly, this is nothing out of the ordinary, we've done this since.
Oh, no, 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 I get it.
I was on NCTC the year before then.
Absolutely not true. We don't necessarily.
I have a question on the, the same one that you just voted on, but for the, there's two possible city council members' positions. One for the business community, um, maybe a public member or a city council person, or the representative at large. So if I wanted to be part of that group, I couldn't, because I don't have a business, I couldn't do the business or community one, right?
There was also a concern with having three council members. Uh, Ms. Bettencourt, when, last year or the year before, when the, this first got uh, formed, there was a concern with having three council members at the same board.
Oh, okay.
That's why the direction and, and from staff was to have a business representative at this board.
Right, and I was serving.
Well, that the biz, the, the issue was that the business representative shouldn't be a council member, that was the issue.
Right, right, okay, so I see there's only three council people on it, so if I wanted to be part of that group, instead of me being, like, applying for the business one, I could apply for the representative at large.
You could be an alternate. You could be a la- an alternate in my place.
Well.
There's some, something to be said about learning the job before, with all the stuff we've got on the table, but, you know.
So, so Juan, you're, you're, according to my, my list, Juan, you're the alternate for that right now.
Right, are you interested in being the alternate?
Well, I, I thought I would go ahead and take the representative at large position.
Okay.
And that way I don't have to bump you, I'd be an alternate.
Okay.
You gotta have somebody who has some, NCTC knowledge that can do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Well, the con- the continuity is gonna be important here, because if we're gonna replace one member uh, to replace two-thirds of that board, that's gonna be kinda dangerous, because we've got a lot of stuff pending before Transportation. We're not gonna have that ability at SCAG now, uh, because again, I think that they'll replace me on Transportation. So I think that, you know, we had all these seats covered with continuity on the topic with people. So unless we're gonna start picking over all those other jobs within that, un- un- under that sector, I think it's, it's, it's uh, you gotta, there's something to be said for continuity of, of, of a position.
Can I ask Mr. Behan how, it doesn't say on this, this list, it says um, that they rotate between Palmdale, Lancaster, Lancaster Valley, but it doesn't say how often, or when.
It's supposed to be every two years that rotation happens.
No, no, I mean, there are meeting locations.
Oh.
No, no, that's a meeting location, she's, the, uh, this one is uh, uh, the meeting locations rotate, not the position.
Right, and how, how, I'm curious as to how often does it say?
It's every quarter, it's every three months.
I mean, is that, I mean, how often, how many?
Every, every, every other meeting is at uh, a different location. So, Santa Clarita or Palmdale, Lancaster, back and forth, and they usually.
Quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
Quarterly.
Oh, I can get that.
I think uh, NCTC.
So I, can I nominate myself to uh, take the representative at large position for that committee?
You've already, you've already been nominated by uh, Councilmember Carrillo.
I nominated you, yes.
We just, we have a first. I'm sorry, we have a first for your nomination, we have a second?
I'll second it.
And this is for the representative at large, is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Yes.
What's that?
It's for the representative at large, to replace me with uh, uh, Councilmember Bettencourt.
Yes, I would, personally, I would, I really think that it's in the best interest to rotate those on an off-year, not replace everybody all at once. But that's your guys' choice. I'll make this, I'll make the substitute motion to maintain Mr. uh, Loa on there for continuity purposes. Okay, hearing no second, we'll call, we're gonna need one. City Clerk?
Mayor Hoffbar?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
No.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, how about uh, all these other ones, anybody else wanna take on uh, anything else here? Okay, hearing none, um, we'll move on to uh, item twenty. Find my spot here on the paper.
Mr. Mayor, do we wanna entertain Mr. Loa's motion?
Oh, you know what, we do have, we do have one other vacancy, mosquito board, who wants to take that one? Mr. Persson's is resigning.
Which board is that?
Vector.
Mosquito board.
Um.
Everyone wants to do something here, here's one for you.
If nobody, I'll, I'll take it if nobody, you know.
You wanna take it?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'll be happy to serve on that board.
If we need a motion, I nominate Mr. Bishop.
By acclamation, Mr. Bishop, for the mosquito board.
I'm sorry, who made the first?
I think in general, I think everyone's in agreement.
I'll, I'll make a second, or I can make the first or a second.
Just, just one second, please.
The Animal Valley uh, mosquito vector control district is out for recruitment for a public member to sit on that board currently.
Ah, okay.
So it's not a city council member that sits on that board.
Okay.
And is there a prohibition against that? And we discussed this once before.
We have the Palmdale Municipal Court, or Municipal Code that outlines how that position is filled. It's appointed by the mayor, or nominated by the mayor and ratified by the city council.
Then you say you notice then, to the public.
I'm sorry?
Are we still talking about the mosquito board?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's currently out for recruitment.
Out for recruitment, for the public member, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought that, that uh, when we had discussed this before, that that position could be filled by a council member, but we had just deferred to a public member, but it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily a public member's spot. So, we'll get some clarification on that, if the clarification is that um, that it has to be a public member, we'll continue with that process. If not, then there's a motion and a second, we'll call for the uh, uh, the vote, uh, uh, um, tentative to uh, reviewing the uh, mosquito district bylaws, okay?
Okay.
City Clerk, you wanna call that?
Mayor Hoffbar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
There you go, alright, so anything else?
Um. Are we still on the appointments and committees?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Loa, are you still interested in being an alternate on the prison board?
Sure.
Okay, we'll keep that the same then. Um.
Alright, now hearing uh, anything else, uh, we'll go ahead and uh, move on to item twenty-four point two.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if we could have a motion on the appoint, on the remaining appointments as Mr. Loa had indicated.
Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Loa had made that motion, I'll second it, I'll, uh, City Clerk, uh.
Is this for this, all the appointments?
They're, they're balanced.
Balanced city appointments, yes.
Not, but not Mayor Pro Tem? Correct.
Correct. Mayor Hoffbar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, um, item twenty-four point two, um, any, any thoughts?
Well.
I'd like this.
Well, I think Laura wants it, but let me at least just say, I wanna thank uh, Mr. Loa here for his time being Mayor Pro Tem during a very difficult year. Um, as you guys all know, we do choose a Mayor Pro Tem every year, uh, a pleasure of the council, we've done that for a while now. We've all had our chance here, except Ms. Bettencourt, and I think that uh, now is her turn, and I think she uh, deserves a chance to represent her district as Mayor Pro Tem, so I nominate her.
That's not a district, this is, that's a city position, but uh, so, well, we'll have to coordinate time, because uh, um, uh, Mr. Loa has, I gotta say something. I've never served with anybody that uh, has been more available, literally at the split second or last minute. Uh, and uh, and I know uh, Richard has brought on more staff at his office to, uh, a lot more flexibility. So, I wanna say that I really have appreciated that uh, flexibility, uh, and your ability to break away midday. I know that can be a challenge when you're employed full-time, but uh, you know, it's up to the council, it's uh, whoever you think uh, is best to serve, a heartbeat away from that senate chair.
You know, I think that we, we uh, have an opportunity here to make history too in the city of Palmdale. To, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think that there's ever been a woman Mayor Pro Tem. So I think that that's important for uh, women to see that uh, we have the first uh, woman being Mayor Pro Tem. And I think that that says a lot about how we want to support um, everybody, uh, to have that chance and have that experience to serve as a Mayor Pro Tem. I did it, uh, yes, it is challenging, yes, you have to be readily available, and I believe that I did a good job. Despite of what you may think, Mr. Mayor.
No, I, 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 see, don't put words in my mouth, sir, I have plenty of people that'll do that for you.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, but I, I believe that I have, when I was Mayor Pro Tem, I did a good job. Like you said, I have a job, I'm, I'm speaking, I can still speak, please.
No, you did, you did, I appreciate that.
I made myself available, I do have a job, and I think that we have to.
So we have a, uh, we have a motion on the floor?
We all this opportunity to a woman to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Because we have to show that we support everybody, not just make it at the pleasure of the council without taking into account that everybody deserves to have that opportunity.
Okay.
Well, I want to say that whoever the Mayor Pro Tem is, and whoever the mayor is, uh, needs to serve the interests of the entire city, regardless of whether it's a woman or a man. And Ms. Bettencourt proved herself not to support an emergency motion to add a voting center for the West Side. There was none, she voted against it.
Well, I think now that the.
Let me just finish, Mr. Bishop, let me, let me just finish, please, let me finish, allow me to finish. Had, had, had Ms. Bettencourt.
Okay, okay, you know what, let's hear one at a time, let's hear one at a time.
Had Ms. Bettencourt persuaded either Mr. Bishop or Mr. Carrillo to go along with her, we would not have had an added voting center for the West Side, she voted to disenfranchise half of the city. After the emergency meeting passed, after the emergency, after the emergency motion passed.
But now, now, now that, now that the election's over, I think we need to not.
Hold on, hold on, I gotta, I don't have to gamble here, I don't have to gamble, hold on a minute.
We need to not focus on politics.
That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't Mr. Loa's buddy as you portrayed it, first of all. That, hold on, uh, ju- stop, hold on, that, that attorney was recommended actually by the city attorney's office, not by Mr. Loa.
The situation had been resolved already by our city attorney, and you guys, why do you charge more money to our city coffers out of taxpayer pocket?
It had, well, okay, we got some revisionist history going on here.
Yeah, we certainly do.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor, and before we uh, get uh.
I've represented this entire city since two thousand nine before we ever had districts, and I worked my butt off.
Wonderful, okay, there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
I think now is the time to put politics behind us, now that the election's over, and it's important that we work together.
No, because it's, because, it's a campaign pitch, pitch.
Well, that is what Loa brought up, he brought it up.
That's right, I did bring it up, and.
The question, is there a question, is there a?
Yeah, there is a second, I second that motion.
Thank you, sir, there's a second to call for the uh, questions, City Clerk, can you call for the uh, question, please?
Mayor Hoffbar?
No.
Ma- Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
No.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alrighty, is that the end of our uh, agenda then?
There's no other business on the agenda.
Alright, we'll go ahead and uh, we'll go ahead and uh, adjourn the meeting to uh, sometime in January, whatever that scheduled meeting is, thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.